Council called me in order for the record. It is Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at four thirty P M. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with real call attendance.
Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, Councilman Overton, Councilwoman Perrow,
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh,
Here.
Councilman Borton,
Yeah.
Councilman Hookland,
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
A couple of changes for our agenda this afternoon. Under our department commission reports, we're going to move item thirteen just before item eleven. So we'll have discussion of park fees before the public hearing. Then on our consent agenda, we're going to remove items six and seven and bring them down to our department commission reports. And that order down there will be where we move them. We're going to move item seventeen first of these four seventeen. Then six, we're moving from the consent agenda, then item number sixteen, and then item number seven from the consent agenda, just so we follow along with that. So with those changes, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption. The agenda has amended.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Do I have discussion? If not, I'll favor sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda adopted as changed. A little bit, yeah, is that me? I don't want to. Yes, again. Okay, so we will move on. There were no items moved in the consent. Well, there were, but they were moved to another place. So we will move on to department commission reports. First item up is discussion. Oh, did we? I thought we did just surpass it. Did we pass it? Okay, all in favor signify by saying. I thought we made a motion. Oh, the consent agenda. I'm sorry. Next item up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Motion a second to approve the consent agenda is amended during discussion. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and consent agenda is agreed to. We'll move on to department commission reports. The first item up is discussion of the proposed new park fees. There's over to Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me tonight. I'm here to talk to you and just discuss and kind of get some feedback, if any, on three fees, two of which are brand new fees, and one is a fee that's been in place for about ten to twelve years that I were looking to update. So with that, I'll jump into it. The first one is the ball field prep closet. This is a request we get from so many different tournament organizers, coaches, all the above, trying to have a game, tournament, whatever, and looking for field equipment. It's extremely hard to find a bag of chalk, just one bag of chalk, or even two bags of chalk here at local stores. So we wanted to offer this based on past requests from these coaches. And for them to have prep prep equipment for ball fields, for softball fields, baseball fields, stuff like that. In that, it's a fifty dollars per day, fifty-three dollars after tax, includes all the stuff you would need to drag a field, prep a field. The second one is ball field temporary fencing. Again, fifty dollars per day per field, fifty-three dollars after tax. This is something that if you have a youth tournament or a senior tournament, it just brings the fence in the two hundred feet from three hundred feet, if that makes any sense, to make sure our fields dual use in that. So those are the two brand new fees, pretty simple, all based on past requests we get from other coaches and tournament organizers. The third one I'm here to talk about is the pickleball tennis court hourly reservation fee. It's currently at two dollars and fifty cents. It's pretty reasonable. After taxes, two sixty-five. We're proposing to move it to four seventy-two or after tax and even five dollars. Work with finance on this and how to calculate all this stuff. And when it comes to time, staff time, all that kind of thing. So they're in support of this fee as well. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Garrett. Counseling questions for staff.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Garrett, are the the ball field prep closet and the ball field temporary fencing, are those add-ons, meaning a tournament organization would have to request those? So it's an option to pick. It's not something that if you're doing a tournament, we're going to add this fee on in addition to.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, that's correct. It's not an automatic add-on. It's if they request it, we have it available for them, trying to make it easier from the host tournaments. And really, it's based on discovery park that we have a tournament.
Great, thanks.
Question, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
So if they don't pay the fee, though, is the closet empty?
It'll be locked up. So so, yeah, if they want it, they can pay that fee. If not, it's locked up onsite. Ready to go. So one is certainly empty. We still have some equipment in there. And if our staff needs to jump in there to get something, they could.
That apply to the settlers park fields as well?
Right now, it's only at Discovery, just to because that's the tournament complex we have. When it comes to prep and settlers fields, that's Meridian Baseball typically does all those for on their own, those types of things with their coaches or their staff.
Counsel, any additional questions for staff? Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Don't go very far. Next up is a public hearing for the proposed winter spring twenty twenty-four fee schedule of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department. Well, for this public hearing for staff comments.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me again. In front of your other fees for our next activity guide, seventy thirty split with instructors and kind of the standard procedure to be here. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Council questions. Councilman Cavanagh.
Garrett, when when do you need this resolution approved by? Is this something tonight? If it's next week, couple of weeks out, I know that once these are approved, then you go and print the activity guide. And so can you give us a little calendaring about what your deadline is to get that printed?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, we would love to release it tomorrow. It's already ready to go. It's all digital. So we do print some copies, so we'd have those available for the public. But we'd like to do it tomorrow and then start doing registrations as of Friday morning.
Okay.
If at all possible.
All right. Thanks, Garrett.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Sherry.
I think in the future, it would be very helpful if you had the previous fee in a table with the new fee, so we could easily compare them.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
One process question, just so we all put it on the record as far as input you got on the changes, anything positive, negative, did you feedback from any organizations that caused you to change it a little bit more one way or the other?
For the.
Proposed changed fees.
For the, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, no, we've kind of made some comments to others, like other organizations, the tennis organizations, pickleball organizations, like, hey, this is probably going to be coming. It's been in place for ten to twelve years. We're working with finance and just doing the calculations of what it should be. We're not trying to make money on any of them. It's more of just to cover our staff costs based on our current cost recovery. So to answer your question, some feedback, but not not a lot.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you.
Miss Corcoran, we have anybody sign up on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, no one signed up. Is there anybody present or online who would like to provide testimony on this item? If you're online, you can use the raise your hand feature. Seeing no one raising their hand online or coming forward, have a motion to close the public hearing if my staff would like to make any final comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion a second to close public hearing. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I think real quick, earlier this year, I was alerted from a couple of citizens who were concerned about the taxes being assessed on classes that we're offering in the city. Finances tried to engage with the state to kind of true some of that out. It has to deal with that we don't charge a facility fee. Goods are taxed in Idaho, services aren't, but we are essentially taxing often services, I think, potentially inappropriately. It's not a huge amount of money, but it I think it's important for us to be correct about this. I know that part of it is working with the state to get some better direction. So I'm cautiously supportive of the motion that's before us tonight, but I would like at a at a later point in time, an update from finance, maybe the parks department about are we appropriate collecting taxes? Do we need to address how we charge for a facility usage to make sure that they are uniform and correct for the classes that we all?
Is there further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the public hearing is closed. Next up is resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four twenty-four. That's correct. We don't need to read the resolution by title.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
Move that we approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four. Twenty-four, a resolution adopting the winter spring twenty twenty-four fee schedule for the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department, authorizing Meridian Parks and Recreation Department to collect such fees and providing an effective date.
Okay.
Have a motion a second to approve resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four twenty-four. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I think Councilman Cavanagh's points are mutually exclusive. I think that concern certainly can run parallel with approval of fees to make sure that comes back to us. And Garrett and the team, the way you you establish these fees on a cost recovery consistent with our policy is really important. You know, you do the due diligence to make sure that they're appropriate and not any greater than necessary to recapture those costs. So for those reasons, I'm certainly supportive of the resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments? Now, Corcoran, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Strater.
Hi.
Overton.
Aye.
Perrow.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
All ayes motion carries and the resolution is agreed to. Thank you very much. Next item up is solid waste program recommended changes to bulky items picked up program. And so it's Laura Lai.
All right. It wouldn't be Public Works without a presentation, so we've got one. Maybe. All right. Thanks, Mayor and Council. So I'm excited to bring program improvements to you today for our bulky item pickup. So this is sort of our first thing coming out of the solid waste master plan, one of the first items that we looked at. So before we get into the specific program changes, I just wanted to remind everyone, the public, about all of the special programs that we have throughout the year. So we have many special seasonal based events like recycle the fall. We do Christmas tree recycling, trash for treasure, as well as several programs that are available year round for residents of the transfer station, squishy water bottles, glass, household hazardous waste, and dropping off bicycles for recycle bike recycle a bicycle. So this discussion today is specifically about two of our seasonal events, so extra trash week and our spring cleanup event. So both of those two events are bulky item pickup events that occur over individual weeks twice per year. So important to note, as I talk about these program changes, we're not looking to change any of the other programs on this slide, just those two. So what are bulky items? So these are items that are too big to fit in your standard curbside trash can. So they could be things like a dishwasher, a couch, a chair, a mattress, an extra bundle of garbage. There are a few things that we don't accept as bulky items, simply because they're too large, hazardous, or require special disposal. So things like boats, hot tubs, tires, you can't set them out on the curb. So twice per year, currently today, residents can call. You have to call ahead and schedule bulky item pickup. The first is the last week of December, and then the second one is the last week of May. So currently, there is no charge for these pickups. Again, the resident calls in, schedules, lets Republic Services know that they have items. They're allowed up to seven bulky items on these weeks. And I'm happy to report, so there's no charge to the city or the customer for these pickups. I'm happy to report that these programs have been a huge success. So, you know, one of the good things to come and report is we're having problems because we're doing such a good job at it. We've seen participation grow significantly with the events over the past few years as we've improved outreach and communication. So, for example, our spring cleanup event, we saw an increase of about fifteen hundred items picked up a couple of years ago to over fifty-seven hundred items this last year. So unfortunately, with the success and program growth, there come some challenges. It really becomes too big of a thing for Republic Services to be able to go around to these all the city residents that request pickup in a single week. So what that ends up is it leaves customers frustrated because their pickup doesn't happen on the day that they think it's going to happen. It's hard for Republic. They have to have a bunch of extra labor, staff time to try to get it all done in one week. So what we did is the city worked with Republic Services to come up with a solution that would work for everyone. So we're proposing to move to a year round bulky item pickup program. So essentially, what this would do is it would take rather than just those two weeks per year that you get bulky item pickup, and it would spread that out through the whole year. So any time of the year, each resident would get ten free pickups. They have would have to call and schedule just like they do today. The pickups are automatically tracked through their account, so it's not like there's a special sticker system or, you know, some of the other programs that exist. So really easy tracking, similar to a system that the City of Boise implemented, which has worked great for their residents. We actually think it's going to increase program participation because people don't have to wait around to have their items disposed of. If you have, you know, an old mattress or a desk or you rearrange, you're not saving that throughout the year for those those two weeks. Important to note, like I mentioned, it's not going to impact the other seasonal programs that we do. We'll still do fall leaf recycling. We'll still do Christmas tree recycling. We'll still do trash for treasure. This just expands the bulky item to year round, which we think is a win for everybody. So visually, what does that look like? Extra trash week and spring cleanup go away, and it now becomes free bulky item pickup is in the year round events. So what would this look like next step? So we would still have extra trash week this December because we're still in twenty twenty-three. Everyone's anticipating that, so we're not looking to take that away. So that would occur. We would hopefully, if you guys approve the resolution this evening, we would memorialize the changes that would go into place in twenty twenty-four. The new program would start in twenty twenty-four, which is when we'd kick off communication and outreach. So we'd update our website to let people know about this. The calendar magnets that Republic Services sends out would have it. We'd do some social media, some utility billing inserts. The good news about this is no one's anticipating any of this until spring, right? So we have some time to educate the public about about this program. We also have asked Republic Services to help us track the usage of this over the next several years so that we can help decide, you know, how many households participate, is ten pickups the right number, how many households are exceeding ten? We really think ten is is going to be an adequate number for most residents, but we're definitely going to be tracking and can adjust that in the future if there's there's issues. Residents can still call for pickup of some of those other items, or if they exceed their ten, you can for a charge, you'd still be able to call and get a pickup or take things to the transfer station as well. So none of that is changing. So with that, stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Sherry.
Thanks, Laura Lai. Appreciate the reasoning behind the change. How will customers sign up for the program? Will they need to call? Will there be a forum on the website? What do you expect?
So Councilman Strater, so everybody will be automatically enrolled. So if you have a trash account with City of Meridian, and I should say a residential trash account, so this this only applies to residential, but you'll automatically be, there's no enrollment, you just call, and your account details that Republic Services has will track your numbers throughout the year.
Councilor Sherry.
So you need to call to schedule a pickup. A pickup, okay. Was there any thought around trying to do a forum on the website as an alternative? Just because I've heard of people trying to call and it taking time, not connecting.
So I can pass that information along. It's it's through Republic Services, so it's it's on their their side of it, but I can definitely pass that suggestion along.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I would also reiterate, just I think making it easier for our citizens to appreciate Republic and recognize, we've had a lot of requests for bulky items. We also get Republic gets a lot of requests. I do think that the the whole times the delays can lead to a unsatisfactory experience for our ratepayers. I love this. So kudos to Republic, you for bringing this forward. I think this is great. I did have a couple of just quick questions. So the Cavanagh family loves the unlimited collection during the Christmas week. It allows us to get rid of all the stuff from the stuff that we got. Where that's going away, if my youngest gets a clubhouse or something like that, there's that's bulky. Do I call Republic to collect that? And and then what happens for the families that have extra bags that don't typically fit in their trash can that week? Are those then bulky? Or how are we going to handle that extra collection that isn't quite a bulky item, but is more than they anticipated that particular week?
So Councilman Cavanagh, that's a good question. So I would tell people to kind of put their, if it's those smaller bags into a container, and then that container would count as one. Republic Services won't take that container. So if it's a larger trash can or larger box, but each of those would count as as an item or a pickup.
Follow up.
Councilman Cavanagh.
We've got some time on this, right? Because we're good for this Christmas. Really, the first time is kind of spring cleaning time. I would encourage you, maybe it's an opportunity to talk with Republic. I I think that continuing those extra bag pickups, the stuff that we put next to our bin during that spring week and during the holiday week is is crucial. And this is, I think, a big step forward in meeting our neighbors who have those bulkier items. But I I hope it wouldn't come as an expense as to what is, I think, it built an expectation from our ratepayers that, hey, I don't have to worry about where I'm going to put these extra two or three bags of quote unquote garbage this week until I maybe have more space next week or over a couple of weeks. Certainly with the spring cleaning collection, I know that's feedback that I get a lot.
I will definitely pass that.
And if I could piggyback on that, you know, if if residents have to call in their extra trash in a, you know, yeah, it's probably not going to be the outcome.
And and I think, you know, speaking somewhat for Republic Services, I think on occasion, if there's a couple of extra bags, I believe their drivers most of the time just pick those up as part of the route and don't count those or track those. I think this is the bigger items that take the bigger specialized trucks to to manage. So I believe they would, for the most part, still pick those up.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Sherry.
I think if there was a way to better differentiate between, you know, just extra bags of regular garb, like extra regular sized trash bags compared to a bulky item, that might really help with the program implementation. And to Councilman Cavanagh's point, I think if there was a way to maintain extra pickup of regular sized trash bags during the last week of December, I think that would be ideal. It wouldn't be an issue, of course, this December, but I think we want to think going forward. And I do think people have kind of an expectation. I I agree with him that there's kind of an expectation around that. I don't think people would expect, you know, a huge item to be picked up, though, if they understood that the program was changing. So.
I just reiterate on those points. I think the numbers, if you could, you know, would have the usage so far, that, you know, ten homes, and at the numbers, you know, you you could be talking, you know, four hundred thousand bulky items under the program, which we know it's not getting used to that. So trading out the bag pickup for four hundred thousand bulky items potential. Probably work with the numbers on Republic to to scale back to keep some of those things. If that's what the outcome, that people will think is more likely to be used by all residents. I'm just accepted.
And just for clarification for the resolution that's on next. So that is a list that we took the opportunity when the service provider changed from SSC to Republic Services to memorialize a lot of these, what we call donated services. So things like trash pickup in the parks, trash pickup at city facilities, a couple of special events. So what that resolution does is it cleans up a lot of those rather than listing out. It was a pretty crazy spreadsheet. It just memorializes. The intent is all city facilities, city events, a couple of these special specialty, and just memorializes that Republic Services intends to donate those services to the city.
So would you like to take this back to SWAC? Would we like to have Republic come back and have a conversation based upon this feedback? I don't know that what I'm not hearing is overall support for giving away the changes right now and starting a communications plan and then coming back and having another conversation about modifications.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Thank you. I I agree with my fellow council members regarding the communication and and the not removing the two weeks a year that are already in place. A lot of folks I know count on those for Christmas time and spring cleaning and whatnot. I just wanted to further encourage something that Councilwoman Strater had said regarding unscheduling the pickups. I know I myself and probably all of you have been stuck on the phone with Republic Services waiting for someone to answer or no one answers. So I would I would prefer for them to come in and share with us what they might be able to do as far as communication with the public. But this it's obviously a significant increase if folks can go from from two times a year to ten times a year, and the number of calls would be much, much greater. So whether they plan on having additional staff set aside for that communication, or they're able to modify the website to allow folks to schedule that, I would like to hear that information first before officially bringing. Just my two cents.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Conrad McDaniel with Republic Services, twenty-one thirty West Franklin Road at the transfer station there. That's At, uh, the transfer station there, that's where our office is. I, I believe the idea is to, as Laurel I said, it, it's gained so much popularity of this program. And Meridian's grown so much since 2012, probably at a rate of 5% a year, that when we have these events, we operationally just get suffocated with requests, which is great. People are used to these, these time periods to, to do the spring clean out, replace their holiday, um, uh, dressings and, and things of that nature. And, and sure, totally understand that. What we'd like to do, as, uh, Councilman Cavanagh said, um, you know, we, we reduce the frustration during those two weeks where we see every day 500 requests for pickups on a route that's normally built for 40 pickups a day. And so by spreading it out throughout the year, it, it helps alleviate that pressure. And sure, we'll still see a surge, especially for the first few years. We'll see that big surge continue in the spring and after the holiday season. But what you'll see as time goes on is people will get used to those special events now be being, instead of just a two week special events, it's really a, a year round program. So they'll start to adjust and they'll put out the mattress in July. They'll put out the swing set in November, you know? That, that, that will help alleviate the pressure of the two programs. And, and maybe we take a look at for the first year or two, taking extra bags during the holiday season, the third week in May or the first week in May. Um, I, I can't decide on that right now, but that's a really good point. If, if people are used to putting out extra trash bags and trash containers, um, maybe we do need to go back and address that a little bit, uh, deeper. Uh, as it currently stands, customers can do that with an extra Republic Services cart, and they can have that cart year round, and it's picked up every week. Um, and they certainly don't have to put it out every week. But generally, we don't accept any trash outside of Republic Services carts year round, aside from those two weeks. Even if you called it in and said, hey, I have my own 32 gallon trash can. Would you pick it up? That's not a bulky item, and we don't pick that up outside of those two weeks.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
I appreciate you being here and coming up, and I, I think you kind of touched on it's, it's two separate issues. In, in one hand, really appreciate the expansion of the bulky item pickup. And I think these 10 items, I think spreads that peanut butter for the most part out over a 12 month period. You still are going to have people during that spring cleanup week and during the holiday week that are going to continue to request for bulky item collection because that flows with the, the seasonality of it. The second piece, though, is that expectation from our citizens about that extra trash that they have accumulated, particularly that last week of December. They're conditioned that that's going to be picked up. And I, I, I don't think this is what Republic is intending and, but it, it, it's starting to at least to look a little bit like we're, we're giving up that extra collection that comes during the holiday week in ex, which I think the vast majority of our community uses in exchange for 10 bulky items. And I, and I worry that unintentionally, Republic and the city is going to create a scenario where the citizens believe that this extra trash is going to be picked up, and it's just not. And so I, I guess I'd encourage you guys maybe to go back, take the feedback from the council, make sure that this is the mousetrap that you want to present, and that it's, it's, it's accomplishing everything that you all are intending, while also meeting the expectations of our city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Yeah, another suggestion, um, I think would help you and would help other customers would be if there was a forum on the website and someone could just request a bulk pickup, understanding that you need to manage the flow of those requests. You could potentially get back to them and schedule them. Here's your date that we're coming to do your bulk pickup, right? So people make their request and then Republic gets back to them via email. Here's your date. I just think an approach like that might be better because I'm anticipating like, if, if someone tries to call now toward the end of December, you're going to be inundated with calls, and that also operationally for you will be challenging. Where if people do a request on the website, maybe that just gives a cue to work through, and you can kind of get back to people and manage that. It's just as, I don't want to tell you how to run your business, but it's just a suggestion of maybe a way that, that would be a better approach, um, than having people on hold.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Councilwoman Strater, thank you. That, that is, uh, really good feedback. In fact, we, we have a process similar in place during spring cleanup, which is kind of married to, uh, trash treasure, uh, in the past few years where there would be an online form that could submit. And, um, and we, we could keep track on a spreadsheet and prepare for, for the route there. Um, I can't speak for Meridian City's website and, and what they're willing to prepare, but Republic Services does offer a, a customer service email, And, and now it's certainly an option for customers to email in. We would just request their, their name, their address, a phone number, and the number and description of bulky items, and we could get that entered.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hogg.
Yeah, to that point, you know, you have a dumpster rental guide. Order now, place your order online, schedule your delivery. Everything's there, it's communication process. So it's just a matter of how you guys want to do that. But, uh, regarding the bulky, is it bulky and extra trash pickup? Is maybe that what we're talking about from a communication standpoint to get that?
Yeah, so your items could count as either. So it could be 10 bulky items, or it could be eight bulky items and two extra bags of trash, or it's, it's 10, 10 items. Um, and then, you know, I think we, we can definitely go back and talk to Republic Services, the one, you know, piece that I have to say is that these are, are their donated services. So, you know, I think we're trading one program for another program. I'm not sure where the flexibility comes in of asking them to do both, um, or do both for the long term, um, could be a little bit challenging. But we couldn't, and certainly if there's not consensus to, to continue it forward, we can have some more discussions.
I, I mean, on a personal level, I, I'm, I'm fine with like five per household. If it allows you to put out the extra trash at Christmas, that's, to me, when you generate the most trash in your household is during that time of year. I could be wrong, um, but, you know.
People certainly can still use their 10 pickups on that last week of the year. It's not their, you know, their 10 aren't, it's not, you know, prorated through the year or, you know, so if you're, the only time you put out big items is around Christmas, then your 10 could be that last week.
I think the challenge is, are we asking people to, every time they put out an extra bag during the holidays to make that request? Is that what we think is the right approach? And I think you, you guys know your business more. When, when do people put out the most bags outside of leaf collection? I, i- is it Christmas or is it during spring?
Mr. Mayor, I would say it is during spring and the early growing months of summer with the grass clippings and, and yard debris that gets cleaned up.
Well, we look forward to at least taking this back and having a conversation before moving, coming back. I think the general, what I'm hearing is people like the concept. There's a few things that maybe need a little bit more work before moving it forward. And as you mentioned, we have time, stuff is changing right away.
The only, the only constraint is if we want it on the Republic magnets. Um, but we'll, we'll likely miss that, that boat. Which is fine, but.
Councilwoman Gordon.
Laurel, I, when do you want this back? Have that conversation, ideally, back before us, so we can make a final decision on these program elements and move forward.
Um, I mean, we'll, we'll get with Republic Services, you know, this later this week and, and see if we can, what we can figure out. So I anticipate in the next couple of weeks, um, we will probably miss magnet printing, but, um, we could talk about just leaving those off or, um, that's just a little bit of the tricky is what do you publish for next year?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Hogg.
Yeah, just looking ahead, Laurel, if, if your discussions, is that something we can discuss next week? Does that get it into the magnet if the decision is made?
Ideally, we would like to print the, or have the magnets ready to print by December 1st, so they're ready to go out to the houses by January. Um, but we could always work around that as Laurel I mentioned.
What we can do in a week? All right, thank you. With that, we won't do item 15. And we will move on to item 17, which is fiscal year 2021 budget amendment, the amount of $800,970 for the Hunter lateral relocation project. I'll turn this over to Mr. Miles.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, so knowing that this is the item for the construction contract, but we had several questions from last week. Um, I propose that we address some of those questions with this item and maybe just have a high level discussion on where we're at as a council on the concept of moving the Hunter lateral relocation forward. Um, so I do have a few slides, cause to address some of the questions that were discussed last week. First and foremost, there was a question about the square footage of the lateral and the site. So you can see up on the main site, on the main, um, PowerPoint there. What you see is roughly, uh, you've got city owned land and MDC owned land. Now, in these layers, there's a couple of things going on that, what I call the north, the top piece of the property is the city owned land and sort of that orange. Down below, that's behind the, the layer behind, it's actually green, is the MDC owned land. So you've got about 34,000 square feet of city owned land, 23,000 and a half square feet of MDC owned land. And then on top of that, you've got sort of the gray hue, which shows what the River Catas proposed development footprint was, um, inside of both of those. Then you've got the lateral easement, you can see running, um, south to west development was roughly 53,000 square feet of that total combined. I think it was like 57,000 in square, uh, or in change of square foot of property owned by the city and MDC. And the lateral easement is about 10,300, so roughly 20%. It's a little shy of 20%. I think it was like 19.8 or something like that. Um, that's the area that the easement takes up on the River Catas proposed development footprint. There was also a question about, um, kind of pros and cons. So we put together just a quick list of pros and cons. Uh, what you've got is if we relocate the Hunter lateral today versus if we just held the Hunter lateral and pros and cons of each of those. Um, primarily, you'll get the updated infrastructure land that's unencumbered, at least from the lateral, um, structure. There has, there was a question about whether or not MDC would consider reimbursement. MDC is here, um, so I'll let them speak to that, but there has been an indication that they'd be, um, willing to consider that and do that. Um, so if there's questions to MDC, that we can have them come up. Likely have an improved assessment on the value of the land. Again, without having an actual assessment on the land, it's tough to say what that would be, whether it would be a plus or minus and how much it would be. But I know that was a question. Um, we currently do have a favorable bid, and then there's also coordinating with the other projects that are scheduled over the next several months on Idaho Ave, which includes water relocation sewer line, as well as ACHD in the paving, um, that they're proposing. There's kind of the, the main pros that we saw of acting on the Hunter lateral now. Aside from the efforts of the economic development of the property and the project that was talked about by you all and MDC several times over the last couple of years. If we were to hold the project and not move forward, certainly there's a possibility that any new development that came along or any new contractor that came along could propose to relocate the Hunter lateral as part of whatever they proposed. Um, and you would probably still have the acceptance of MDC to consider reimbursement. But there are, in my opinion, several cons to not moving the project forward. Whether that's, you'd have to go back out to bid again, and who knows what that bid price would be? Likely higher, um, can't say that for certain, but that's sort of philosophically, that's what we've seen. Um, don't know who you would get or what they would propose. Um, certainly it would be a delay in the development. There's irrigation season to contend with, so if you don't do it now, you're pushed out at least until the next, uh, November irrigation off cycle. Um, and then you still have this restriction on the property and the lateral as well. And last, there was a question about sort of timeline, and we didn't get from the contractor a specific timeline schedule yet. They haven't delivered that. They were projecting to deliver that at the end of the week. But we do know under contract, there's a 60 day to substantial completion, 90 days to final completion. And so if you sort of walk the math backwards and start 60 days from the irrigation schedule and 90 days from the irrigation schedule, you get to a no later than start date or notice to proceed in January. That's probably the best we can do for a timeline right now. And I think those were the main questions, um, that we had last week in regards to the loss fee of whether or not to move this project forward. So maybe I'll stop there. We've got the engineering departments here, Warren, we've got MDC here. So if there are questions that I can't answer that they want to address, we can invite them up.
Council questions for staff at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Um, the coordination with Idaho Avenue, that's interesting. Can you tell me a little bit more about that? Or is there someone that could address that? Is there a synergy between those two projects? Like how, what benefit is there from coordinating those?
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Strater, I will ask, uh, Warren come up, address the timing of that project and what that looks like. And certainly there'll be a, they happen at the same time, so there will be less disruption overall.
Oh, Mayor, Mr. Council, Councilman Strater. Um, or Councilwoman. Both of those projects are planned to basically, well, this one's gone out to bid, plans to start construction sometime in January. We're in the process of trying to finalize the plans for the Idaho Street project. Uh, we had to add in the roadway improvements that AC decided that they wanted to do. So essentially, they overlap. There's a section of, there's a section of them that overlap. And we will coordinate, they're both, they'll both be going on at the same time. So we will coordinate the construction, um, because we've got, we're managing both projects, and we will coordinate the construction with those contractors so that we can coordinate road closures and things like that, so that it's efficient. And we don't have, uh, you know, people getting upset because we complete one project and come back in immediately and do the next project and so forth. But they are planned to essentially have the same construction window. Um, this work for the Hunter lateral is actually outside of the footprint of the anticipated construction for the water and sewer project. It essentially is to the south. They only overlap on the Idaho Street section. And this is on the south side, water and sewer will be further out into the roadway. So they're not necessarily stepping on top of each other. I don't know if that's your question or what.
Mayor.
Councilwoman Scherer.
Yeah, no, that's really helpful. Um, it's actually a significant benefit that we hadn't really covered in a lot of detail. So I think that's interesting. I guess minimal disrupt, I mean, just disrupting at one time to the downtown as opposed to, you know, multiple projects. Um, so that's interesting. And I appreciate you kind of walking us through that. Thanks.
Also any additional questions at this point in time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
I don't have any more questions for our staff. I don't know if Ashley or Dave are available for some questions from the MDC standpoint.
Get them both.
All right.
Good afternoon, Ashley Squires, administrator for Meridian Development Corporation.
Dave Winder, the current chairman of the MDC board.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Dave, thanks, appreciate you both being here this afternoon. So in Dave's presentation, he talked about reimbursement from MDC. Has Urban Rural District taken an action solidifying that? Is this just a general consensus based on conversations? Help me understand kind of where your body is at.
Mayor and, uh, Councilwoman Cavanagh, we have had a general conversation about reimbursement to the city, should that be desired. We will take that up at our December 13th fourth meeting, uh, officially. We needed to see what you all wanted to do in regards to the Hunter lateral first. But we are certainly wel, willing to have that conversation. And I think certainly willing to entertain an idea of reimbursing you.
Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Cavanagh.
Yes, maybe a question for, for Mr. Nary then. We've got some action before us tonight. At least part of my decision is based on the willingness of MDC to reimburse. That decision hasn't been made. Can we, I think it's a resolution that's before us, approve that with the conditions that MDC would MDC would reimburse. Walk me through that where we don't have a letter, we don't have an MOU from them. I believe both, I believe the administrator squires and the chair that that's what MDC is going to do. I just want to make sure from a process standpoint that the action that we take correctly follows that.
So, yeah, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council. I, I think to be fair to both MDC and the council. I, that has always been the conversation that has always been the discussion between both the city and MDC on this project. Regardless of who the third party might have been. So will that likely change? Realistically, no, I don't, can't foresee that changing. But to be fair to both MDC and the city. If the sole purpose of agreeing to do this in your mind is only because MDC will reimburse the city. Then I wouldn't recommend that you, that you do it. If that's the only reason you would consider it. Only because I can't, they can't guarantee today that they will do that. The likelihood they're going to do that, the likelihood that MDC is going to do that. My opinion and Ms. Squire's opinion are probably going to be fairly high. But, but neither of us could give you that level of assurance. So to be fair to them and to the city. If that's your only purpose to agree to it, then I would suggest that that's probably not, that's not there. But is it likely to happen? Yes. Is it going to happen? I don't know. So I, I want to be fair to you and to the council and to MDC. You know, there isn't that in, in writing today. I think it will happen, but it hasn't happened.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I feel very strongly that the reimbursement agreement is important to me. I guess a question for. Legal. Would it be possible to? You have like a provisional, because I realize that what's driving this is there's a bid that's going to expire. So would it be possible to? Maybe dial it on when does that bid expire exactly? And is it possible to firm this up? By then, maybe with an ad hoc meeting of the MDC or something along those lines.
In case behind you, if you want him to answer that question.
Current bid that we have, Mayor, council members, Councilwoman Schrader, it, it does expire Friday, this Friday. So they will hold their bid till Friday. That'll be another discussion if we have to. I can't guarantee. The second highest bid, just to remind you, is roughly two hundred thousand dollars higher. And the third highest is double, so. That's just for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, I mean. It sounds like it's a high likelihood that it will be approved. So I, I don't know. I don't really want the perfect to be the enemy of the good, but it would be very hard to. Take future actions like this if, if that didn't come through, if that makes sense, just from a. Just relationship perspective, but I, I have faith that that'll come through if it's important, but. It's a mystery. There's not any other way of having a special meeting or even like, are they allowed to do like a signature approval if it's public record or something along those lines?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, yeah, I mean, even under the rules to, to notice up a meeting and. Put them under that gun to have a decision and then again to go back to the. I, I try to be fair to everybody. I think that's, that's pretty ambitious. I would agree with your, your last statement. Is the likelihood of it to happen? Yes. Again, I can't guarantee it. Certainly Ms. Spires can't guarantee it. But certainly I don't foresee any change in the relationship that's existed on this project. I mean, and not looking at. Even the relationship with the city with MDC's board, but on this particular project and this particular location. It's always been the conversation between the city and MDC. That reimbursement would occur either from the developer or from MDC as part of the tax increment, whether it went through the developer to the city directly. That was always the intent.
Yeah, thank you.
Council, any additional questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council, I think really to that point, I think again, Mr. Neri makes a valid point. Whether or not the reimbursement is the only criteria that's people are looking at to say that's the reason to do this project now. We as staff feel that there are multiple reasons to move forward with the relocation of the lateral. An additional component, speaking to the valuation, I think somebody asked a question about what value would we see by removing the lateral? And without, we don't have a, a new appraisal. But we did ask a land broker for some feedback and they reiterated that we were on the right track, that yes, you would improve the value of the land. They provided some numbers that are based in what the value of the land was at the time of the purchase and sale agreement. Would increase that value by about sixty thousand dollars. You would need to do a new appraisal, a new appraisal on a vacant piece of land with no encumbers to say what is the true value today. But that was the value back then and the increase to that value at the time would be about sixty grand. Again, with the economic development mindset and looking at what does this do to a piece of land to help? Further the discussion about the next steps of this property, I think is an important component as well. With that, then the remaining actions on this item or this. Project are sort of contingent and up to you. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you, Dave. Council, additional questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
That's one Pearl.
Just like some clarification on the reimbursement timing. Are we waiting until there's tax increment that's coming from a development on this property specifically? Or what does that look like in terms of how long the city will, the front of those funds until we reimburse?
Again, Ashley Squires from Meridian Development Corporation. Mayor, Councilwoman Pro, it will be tied most likely to this property in terms of when TIF is generated. Which then encourages us to move forward with a project as quickly as possible to generate that TIF. We have financial agreements for the Union ninety-three property, and we also have financial agreements with some of the properties that are included. In the block bounded by Broadway, Idaho, Main Street and Second Street. So most of the TIF is going to have to come from this site specifically. We can reimburse as it, it comes to us. It typically takes eighteen to twenty-four months after a project is complete to actually generate any real TIF. But that's how it usually works.
Well, council, you do have before you the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget amendment for your consideration. Uh, miss, he will be abstaining from this vote. Council, Councilman Holton.
Yes. I would move approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget amendment in the amount of eight hundred thousand nine hundred seventy dollars for the Hunter lateral relocation project.
Second.
I have a motion of second for approval of the budget amendment. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Are we on item seventeen for the approval of the construction contract?
Oh, you're on the budget amendment seventeen. At the right order? I think it should be.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, just reopening it up for discussion.
Uh, yeah, we are in discussion.
Okay, um, I do have a couple thoughts. So I, I agree that. It, it looks like this improvement is necessary, no matter how this property moves forward. To make it a usable piece of land and maximize its value. The reimbursement agreement, I think, is an important driver of it. But I do want. To sort of put a caveat out there, especially for MDC, so they understand my thinking. And we're not considering putting this out for bid again at this time, but I'm going to be very. I'm in the future, if we open up this property for development, I'm going to be pretty. I'm going to scrutinize it a lot as I think we should, and I hope a future council will take a hard look at what our objectives are with it. I think that's really important, so I, I wouldn't take my approval today as an indication that I would be on board in the future. Not that I wouldn't be, but I'm just really going to be. Because of the market conditions. In my view, not improving. And because we've had a couple of. I maybe speed bumps is putting it lightly, but I think we have to be really thoughtful and deliberate about what we're looking to get out of this property in the future if we put it out to bid again. So I just wanted to. Put that out there.
Are there further items for discussion on the motion? Okay, if not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Schrader.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Pro.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Oh.
Borton. Hogland.
Hi.
Four eyes, one no, one abstain, the budget amendment is agreed to. With that, we'll move on to item six, which is purchase and sell, well, move on to purchase and sell agreement between city of Meridian and River Catas Development. Concerning plans for the Hunter lateral relocation project.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, again, this action is related to the previous discussion where. Under the MOA, the city has the authority to purchase the plans to affect the construction to move forward, so happy to take any questions.
If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move that we approve the purchase and sale agreement between the city of Meridian and River Catastrop Development LLC concerning plans for the Hunter lateral relocation project.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the purchase and sell agreement. Is there discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? And then those abstain, Mr. Borton. So all eyes, no nays and abstain. Next item up is approval of construction contract to La Riviera Inc. for the Hunter lateral relocation.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move that we approve the construction contract to La Riviera Inc. for the Hunter lateral relocation. For not to exceed amount of six hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and two dollars.
I have a motion of second to approve the construction contract. Is there discussion? If not, the, all in favor, signify by saying aye. It's not, he, we don't need to rock, yeah. Yeah. All those favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay?
No.
Uh, any abstains? All eyes, one nay. And last item up on this round is the termination of the, oh, item is agreed to. There's the termination of MOU with the civic block development proposal between the city of Meridian. Meridian Development Corporation and Meridian Catas LLC.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm hoping.
Just to comment before I make the motion, I appreciate the council's diligence in trying to work with River Catas and the market conditions. Just not work out favorably, and it's just one of those things that. This business decision was reached by all parties, so. Time to move forward and then see what happens in the future. So with that comment, Mr. Mayor, I move that we terminate the memorandum of an agreement. The civic block development proposal between city of Meridian, Meridian Development Corporation and Meridian Catas LLC.
Second. I have a motion of second to approve the termination of the MOU. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? And one abstain, all eyes. No nays and one abstain from Councilboard. Okay, thank you very much for those that were here for that portion and look forward to continuing to moving that project forward. With that, we'll move on to item eighteen, update on the American Rescue Plan Act projects. Mr. Miles.
Mr. Squire. Lights for this one. So council, this is recap, sort of catch up on the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds that the city of Meridian received. Based on the pandemic from two years ago, I feel like it's been a while since we've been here. There has been progress being made. We thought it'd be a good time to come back and talk to you about an update. We'll go through sort of a reminder of funding, where we stand on some projects and then the additional projects that we have talked about, but haven't moved forward, waiting for. Direction on those. Did want to just reiterate our, the policy perspective that we've talked about in the past. You know, consider the staffing impacts, consider projects that reduce operating costs over the long term. Consider projects that reduce capital costs over the long term. Those that will benefit the community in the long run as well as. I already mentioned that one, staffing impact. A high level reminder, roughly a three hundred and fifty billion dollar program, Idaho received a little more than one billion dollars. Meridian's allocation was twelve point eight million dollars. Timeline of the grant program, projects have to be, funds have to be obligated for projects by December thirty first of twenty twenty-four, so. Thirteen months from now. Have to expend funds by December thirty first of twenty twenty-six. We are currently going through the reporting process with projects that are in progress, so things like the Woodrose Apartments have been expended. Reported on the Jesse Tree allocation. The consultant fees as well as some of the design costs for the public works projects have been moving forward. There is, if you recall, the twelve point eight million dollars has a sort of a breakdown of. There's a revenue loss category that funds can be attributed to up to ten million dollars. I think it's important to remember that that's an up to, it's not that you have to allocate ten million dollars. If you did, that would leave roughly two point eight million dollars remainder. There's the sort of project philosophies that we've reiterated over the last few times we've been in front of council. Get projects that are addressing one time capital costs because this is one time money. Look at those that help us on the operational side and the capital facilities. Along with, again, staff impacts, allowing the least amount of reportability risk along with flexibility. Have been some of our goals. So as you can see there, what we have are sort of the projects that this group has considered in the past. We've got the consultant services, which has moved forward. You can see from left to right what the estimated cost were that we brought to you, what was obligated, and then what's been expensed so far. You've got the emergency housing assistance, that's the dress Jesse Tree funds that were expended over the last year. The Woodrose apartment assistance, you've got the bio solids, we did show the biogas because that was a project that was discussed. Along with, we talked about the public safety facilities and some fiber projects. That was, those were the projects that were, we discussed the last time we were in front of you. Today, again, we've moved forward with the consulting services to help us keep us in track, make sure we're doing this program correctly. We've completed the Jesse Tree expenditure of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, the Woodrose apartment. The bio solids drying has moved forward. We got the estimates in Lorelei and Public Works. We're here in front of you a couple of weeks ago, talking about that estimate came in about four point six million dollars. They've expended so far roughly sixty five thousand dollars of the obligated, I'm going to call it three hundred thousand dollars for a round number. That's on the design side of things. That is nearing a hundred percent completion on the design side. And then the biogas utilization came off the board. We did have some expenditures obligated on the engineering side because we had to do the, that preliminary engineering to get those preliminary costs. Leaving you with roughly a remainder of eleven point six million on the obligation side that's available. And so really to the meat of the conversation is what do we do going forward? And if we consider the programs, goals of capital costs, applying money to capital projects, lowering operational costs. Averting the risk on the reporting side of things, considering the staff impacts as well. We've already had the, as I understand, the head nods from you all from Lorelei's presentation on the biogas, so that project's moving forward. There's roughly five point one, five point two million dollars on the fire station number eight and roughly two point eight on the police station up in the northwest. And then you've got eight separate fiber projects, which we can go through the specifics of those if you'd like. They all total about six hundred and forty five thousand dollars. So you do the math, you're over that eleven point six million dollars. And I think from a staff perspective at least. Looking for guidance from you and approval, head nods from you that moving forward with reimbursing the revenue law. moving forward with reimbursing the revenue loss side on funding the fire station and the police precinct along with the public works Bio Solids drying project and shaking out those in terms of where the buckets of money fit under the ARPA guidance. We have to put some of the money for the public works project in the public works infrastructure category. And it's really going to balance how much of the call it $7.9 million of fire station and police station funds available. Go towards, go in, pay that back through ARPA. Sort of indicates how much you're going to pay on the public works project in which bucket. That's the ask really is, does council agree that we pay $11.6 million to these top three projects? As they shake out and move forward. Allowing the city and you all to then have a policy discussion on, do you want to fund fiber projects through city revenues that are paid, paying back through the revenue loss side of things that are now city funds because the revenues are there through the ARPA funding being paid to the city directly. Versus getting into the reporting nightmare of going through eight different fiber projects and reporting on each and every single one of those in three different categories across the projects. And then getting a remainder amount of money on the fiber and police station, fire and police stations. Saying how much is left there that can apply to that and then breaking apart the public works project. Or are there other projects that the council is looking at saying, I want to do something completely different? And again, we staff looked at it from a reportability standpoint. Having the prior direction of sort of focusing on these projects as these were the ones that everybody was sort of in alignment, saying, yes, that's where this money should be spent, using the ARPA funds to pay for these. Uh, through the revenue loss, that money comes back to the city and then the council can discuss what it wants to do with those funds, separate conversation. That's been the, the mindset of where we've come. And that's the recommendation before you is to expense the remaining $11.6 million between the three projects, Bio Solids, Fire Station Eight and
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Edit, and I agree with your recommendation 1,000%. Get in, get out, spend it all on those one-time top three capital expenditures. Secondary discussion, how we spend the city revenue of equivalent value on other items without ARPA strains. Yep. Do that and be done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
The heads are nodding on that. It makes sense to do it that way. I think Councilman Borton has good, good advice there.
Mayor and Council appreciate the head nods and
is, is there anything that we need to do to effectuate that result so we can feel comfortable moving forward?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, from my perspective, at least each of these projects, again, when there's a transaction will come back. At least in my mind, unless Bill says otherwise on the consent agenda, when there's contracts and payments to be made. Unless there's something else that we need to do in your mind.
The projects are wrapped up at the police and fire. I think the question is, do we want to actuate that here in the next month, working with our team roughly to what we think the other one will cost? Let's, we'll work with Todd and see what, if there's anything we can do directly as compared to waiting for their conversation. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
All right. With that, we'll move on to item 19.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move that we go into executive session per Idaho Code 74-2061F.
Motion, a second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? If not, Kirk, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Perro. Councilwoman Perro.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Holton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. We'll move into executive session.